The regular meeting of the Board of Directors of the Bellevue School District. At this time, we will do roll call. Christine Chu. Seema Sarafan.
Carolyn Watson.
Kelly Aramaki.
And Director Aris is almost here and will be joining us in a second. Executive Director Harrison.
Thank you, President Sarafan. Our student speaker this evening is a young man who you've met on a number of occasions. He has spoken to the board, he's made public comment, and Dr. Aramaki referenced him a few weeks ago and indicated that he's serving as my intern. So he's a senior at Big Picture, working with me as an intern, and he's going to leave the pledge and the acknowledgement and talk a little bit about his experience so far. So come up forward, Xavier. Thank you. Xavier Nishikawa.
Thank you, Xavier. So as soon as you're ready, if you would lead us in the pledge, we will all follow you.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That will show up. Yeah, there we go.
Okay. For the land acknowledgement, we acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of the Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Duamish and Snoqualmie tribes. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial. We reflect on the historic context that brings us to reside on this land and accept responsibility to interrupt or erasure. We commit to an ongoing partnership with the Snoqualmie tribe as we listen to, learn from, and lead with their guidance. Okay, and then for my short talk. Hi, I'm Xavier Nishikawa. Some of you may know me because I've been sneaking around the district for the past month. And I also came here for robotics. As a student at Big Picture, part of my curriculum is finding an internship. So since freshman year, I have found an internship each semester, sometimes it was a semester or the whole year. This year, instead of sitting at a desk programming all day, I wanted to do something different, something where I could work with others and learn more about an organization. And this is where the school district came in. So I knew John from last year when I was doing the advocacy for robotics. So from that, I knew John was like a heavy communicator within the school district, so I wanted to work with him. Luckily, he took me in with open arms, and so has everyone else. From my experience, everyone in the school district has been like the nicest people I've ever met, and they've also been some of the funniest. I'm lucky in which I get to see many parts of the district, and from these experiences, I have been able to learn a lot about various things that have affected me positively in robotics. And each week, I get to experience something new. So part of my internship is going to all types of meetings. I don't know which ones are... Sorry, I should not... Okay. It has never really occurred to me how many variables there are when making a decision, especially when, as a school district, we're trying to consider like the needs and like everyone. And so it kind of creates a struggle, and it was something that also happened in our robotics team, where we have like issues of inequity. And so from the school district and from how everyone here acts, I've been able to apply that to robotics, and we're trying to apply that even more. And so I actually really wanted to thank the school district for giving me this opportunity to work with all these amazing people. And I think that often gets like underlooked, and like you guys often get blamed for all the good, for like all you guys try to do. And so, yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, at this time, we go to acknowledgements, and as we start our meeting, we as a board have something that we want to say. As we begin our meeting, we follow Dr. Aramaki's written and video messages of support to members of our community and acknowledge the devastation and sorrow following the series of events from the past two weeks, which have resulted in tragic loss of life and pain. We acknowledge and support those who were impacted directly or indirectly as a result of the heinous attacks in Israel almost two weeks ago that resulted in tragic loss and injury to thousands of innocent lives. As events have continued to unfold, we are also heartbroken by the increasingly urgent and tragic humanitarian crisis resulting in devastating loss to innocent Palestinians and other civilians who have been killed or injured as a result of the bombings in Gaza. Like our community, we are learning about this crisis as it is reported in the news, standing witness to enormous tragedy and pain with fear and dismay. We grieve for and support all of those who've been and continue to be impacted and hurt by this ongoing tragedy, particularly our community members who are Jewish, Muslim, Israeli, and Palestinian. We ask our community to respect and create space and support for those enduring this pain, whether it's whatever its source, and to stand together in support of those who may need the greatest comfort. While we appreciate that members of our community may differ in their assessments of this crisis, we ask everyone to show respect and compassion for each other and to know that we will not tolerate any form of harassment, intimidation, or bullying. At this time, I acknowledge other events, and I read from our public acknowledgements. October 7th through 8th were Shimni Azarette. October 8th was Simchat Torah. October 9th was National Indigenous Peoples' Day. October 9th through 13th was National School Lunch Week. October 10th was World Mental Health Day. October 15th was Sherad Navatri. October 16th was Birth of the Bob. October 16th through 20th is National School Bus Safety Week. October 18th, yesterday, was International Pronoun Day. October 18th was also Unity Day. October 23rd will be Chong Yang Festival and Seniors Festival. And October 31st is Halloween. We recognize all of these. At this time, I asked for a second to my motion to approve tonight's agenda. Do I have a second?
One second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, I ask all those in favor to please say aye, and all those opposed please say nay.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the motion carries. At this time, I ask for a second to my motion to approve the consent agenda for the purpose of discussion. Do I have a second to approve the consent agenda? Okay, is there any discussion about tonight's consent agenda? Or is there any item that anyone wishes to take out for the purpose of discussion and we can pass the... Okay, so I believe, is there any? All right. Okay, so all those in favor of approving tonight's consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Okay, the motion carries, and I turn now to Superintendent Aramaki for your update.
Great, thank you so much. All right, I'm excited to give my superintendent update for today. Go ahead and go to the next slide. You had mentioned this in your acknowledgements, but Indigenous Peoples' Day was on October the 9th. Our Director of Equity, Shamari Jones, and I were able to attend the Indigenous Peoples' Day event, which was held over at Lake Washington High School, and it was really a wonderful event to be a part of. And we just want to publicly say that we honor our kids and our families who have indigenous background, and we want to center them and their experiences and their education here in Bellevue School District. And so we're excited about the partnership with the Eastside Native American Education Program, which serves Bellevue, Lake Washington, and North Shore, and we want to continue to grow that partnership in Bellevue. Next slide. This week is Unity Week, so you might be seeing lots of amazing pictures on social media of our kids and our staff dressed in orange. The Bellevue Education Association launched kind of an initiative this week just to promote unity in our community here in Bellevue. And so people, staffs at the district office and in schools have been building these red and orange chains with messages of unity and of appreciation for each other. The Bellevue Council PTSA jumped in and participated. They had a booth at the latest Bellevue Schools Foundation event, and they had kids and community members writing messages of appreciation for staff and our community, and so they hung it at the ESC. But we are thankful for our community and thankful for, you know, this desire to be unified as a community. In the picture on the bottom right, I released a video message yesterday or the day before talking about unity, in particular in regards to the original message that I had sent out about the conflict in Israel and in Gaza. And so this message I sent out recently was a message just to embrace our beloved community and to talk about the different things that make us a beloved community. Next slide. A couple of quick things I wanted to share about transportation. This has been a pain point for many families, and so I just want to apologize to our community about the challenges that we're experiencing with transportation. And so families, again, this week have been impacted, and in the foreseeable future, we are going to continue to have challenges with bus transportation and the lack of bus drivers. And what I'll say is, it's not an excuse, but this is an issue that districts all around us are having, is the recruitment and hiring of bus drivers. And so just a quick synopsis of this, but here's the problem is, is that we are canceling bus routes on a weekly basis now and in the foreseeable future until we can solve the problem. We are still short about 12 bus drivers. And then on top of not having 12 bus drivers to fill the routes, we have about five to seven who, on top of that, are out sick every day lately, especially with the flu and things that are going around. So as you can see, with that many drivers short, it is very difficult for us to maintain routes, and so we've been canceling about four or five routes a day. The causes of the bus driver shortage, a couple of things. One, you know, just in general, in our economy, we are at historically low employment rate levels. The bus driver role is challenging in that it's a unique split shift job. We had high retirements this past year, which exacerbated the problem. And then I think that the deeper problem is around lack of affordable housing. So many of our drivers travel an hour or more to get to work. There are a number of things that we're doing to address the challenges, so I just want the community to know that this is a top priority for us. The first thing is, we have been putting out messages on social media, and families have been helping us get the word out that we are looking for bus drivers. And the positive thing is, we've had about 10 interviews in the past week or so, and what they've been telling us, the people who are applying, is that they're seeing it from family members who are posting on social media that we need bus drivers. So just want to encourage families, that works. Facebook, it works. And so I'm just thankful for families who have been getting that message out. We're going to keep putting the message out from our comms team, and then if families could just take that and promote it to their neighbors and friends, you have to have had a driver's license for five years with a good driving record. So any 22-year-old kid who's looking for a job, this might be a really good one for you. So the other things that we're doing, in the meantime, we are rotating routes that are being canceled to spread out the impact on families. So we don't want to necessarily impact one group of kids over and over and over again, so we are rotating it, which has challenges in itself, but that is something that we're doing. We are conducting numerous hiring events in the community. You're going to see buses all over the community signing people up to work. We are partnering with the city, with Metro, to try to address this problem more systemically. We are pursuing alternate options like van pooling. So there are some things that are out there around parents banding together and doing some van pooling. And then one thing we are also going to do is, we're going to consider some potential tweaks to our school bell times for the 24-25 school year to make it more efficient. We probably could cut four or five routes just by aligning times a little bit better. So that's my update on transportation, but I appreciate the families reaching out, asking questions, and hopefully this gives some explanation and a little bit of hope as we try to address this problem.
Quick clarifying question. You said you need a license. I assume you also need some training.
Yes.
Is our district volunteering to put anyone in training classes? Do we, like, what's available, and is there any timeline that we want to promote?
Yeah, so here's the great thing, is you have to have had a regular driver's license for five years with a good driving record, but once you apply and we hire you, we pay for a three weeks of training. So we pay for the training, and we pay them for their time. So they start making money as soon as they're signed on, and then they get their, whatever the license is called, the drive buses. So it's a really good deal, and then it fits not everybody's schedule, but for people who like to have that kind of time in the middle of the day to get errands done and things, it does work for some, so. Okay, next slide. So sort of related to that, I spoke at the Bellevue City Council meeting this past Monday, mainly to celebrate our schools and to present them with a banner for our six schools that ranked in the top 30 in the state. That was exciting. But then I ended by sharing with them a few opportunities that we have in front of us to partner together between the school district and the city of Bellevue. And these are the four that I talked about. One was in kind of managing enrollment and looking at enrollment, the challenges that we're having and how we solve them. The second one is around affordable housing. So we talked about the challenges of not having housing that our own staff can afford to live in, which is going to become a bigger and bigger problem in the future. I talked to them about our launching of the strategic plan, which we have a work session right after this board meeting, and then I talked to them about transportation and the challenges that we're having and the help that we need from the city in order to address not just our school bus transportation, but the challenges around metro and walking and biking. So, next slide. A couple of updates on middle school consolidation study. First, tomorrow is when we are going to launch on our website a district summary of the data that we got from our two demographers. We will post the two accompanying demographer reports. There's going to be a survey that's posted as well for families to give feedback, ask questions, so anybody can start giving feedback right away, and then they can always email us as well, which we welcome. Our first phase of staff and family engagement is happening next week with more engagement opportunities forthcoming. So as soon as things come up around, new engagements come up on the calendar, we will post them to the website and then communicate it out through our news and events and through our schools. The goals for this first round of engagement are the following. One is to build a collective community understanding of the data and of our enrollment challenge. The second goal is to collect input and feedback from the community on what priorities and factors should be considered in addressing this challenge. And then the third goal for this first round is to continue to collect questions, build out of FAQs, so that families can better understand the data and where we are at. The most up-to-date information will always be on our website at bsd405.org. There is a link right on the front page, which will take you to everything that is current, and then we'll be pushing things out through our schools as well. Next slide. And then just to close in kind of celebration, so we had an October Professional Development Day this past Friday, and it's so important that we invest in the professional development of our staff. And this October, the focus was on equity, around beloved community and around cultural competency, diversity, equity, and inclusion standards. And so all of our schools did some kind of activities to address what it means to live out the beloved community in their schools and to kind of look at these new standards around cultural competency, which involve things like understanding self, understanding others, and how do we take action to make our classrooms and school communities inclusive and equitable. And so it's really great. If you see, these pictures are from Newport High School. They looked at the standards, the CCDEI standards, in the morning, and then they all took buses to the Wing Luke Museum and got to experience just learning about different Asian culture and language, and the feedback from the staff at Newport High School was just incredibly positive. And so I just want to commend, this happened all across the district where people did different types of things, but I do commend the Newport High School staff for their creativity in really engaging people in our cultural work with our teachers. Next slide. Related to this is, these are pictures from Sumamish High School. So as you know, I talk of joy as much as I possibly can, and just as much as we're trying to cultivate joy with our kids, we are trying to cultivate joy with our staff as well. And so Sumamish embedded fun in their professional learning. So in addition to talking about CCDEI standards and beloved community, they had their teachers glassblowing, making little glass beads. They had their teachers doing some theater work. Some teachers did some choir and singing. And so I just want to show you a quick video. It starts out kind of quiet, it gets a little bit louder. They sound okay in the beginning, but they get way better by the end of the first minute. And so it's about a minute long, but this is just to capture the joy that our teachers are having as they're doing great work in our schools. See if you can spot Derek Richardson. The principal's there.
Thank you. So I will, we go now to public comment, and we just start by asking our executive director, John Harrison, if we have a sense for how many people we have for public comment tonight.
Excuse me, we have two registered in-person commenters, and at this point, we do not have anybody online, but we will check and see once we've done with the in-person speakers.
Thank you. Okay, so I will just direct anybody who's going to be doing public comment to make sure that you have read the guidelines, and I will give a short summary of our expectations. So this is the time during our meetings when we receive public comment. Details about public comment and our expectations are on our agenda, and they're also displayed right now on the screen. Please remember that you can also communicate with us by email or voicemail. Our email is board@bsd405.org. The board is grateful to receive public comment, and we appreciate the thoughtful input of our community. Because of the limitations of our board calendar, we limit public comment to 20 minutes, and we limit each comment to not more than two minutes. The board will listen to all your comments carefully, but we generally do not respond. So we expect speakers to engage in a civil manner and not engage in any form of communication that's identified as unacceptable, which includes slander and libel, invasion of privacy, obscenities, and harassment, intimidation, bullying, or discrimination. Also, we can't accept public comment on pending investigations involving student discipline, allegations of employee misconduct, and allegations of discrimination or harassment, and that is to preserve our ability to hear appeals. So again, we thank you, and please know that while we will be listening to all comments, we generally do not respond to comments in this setting. So if we could please have our first speaker. Thank you.
We'll have Mr. Joel Ingram.
Good evening. October is dyslexia awareness month. One in five students struggle with dyslexia and basic reading skills. In the past two years, Bellevue has turned the ship regarding teaching foundational reading skills in the K-2 classrooms. More work is left, but a solid foundation is well underway. As the district has a goal of ensuring all students learn to read by third grade, we need to have a realistic assessment of what it will take to get there. Tonight, I'm asking the district to commit to ensuring all students who are below grade level in reading, the 20%, get 45 minutes per day of small group Tier 2 reading interventions, led by a teacher trained in multisensory structured literacy in an MTSS intervention framework. Can Bellevue do it? Does Bellevue have the resources in place? No matter the logistics, I believe Bellevue can and will. Our students who struggle the most need this intense level of support. Bellevue is an excellent district and on its way to becoming exceptional. Forty-five minutes of reading interventions per day is the next step towards serving all students and closing the achievement gap. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker?
Mr. Alex Zimmerman.
Okay? Super. Hi, my friend. My name is Alex Zimmerman. I live in Bellevue for 35 years. I spoke before, and I will promise you now to everybody who listened to me, when you support me in November, 7th of November, I will bring $3 million and restore everything what is democratic mafia fascist did to us children. Yips. I'm totally against this, and I'm totally against Amazon, you know what this mean? Because Amazon key to everything. A trillion dollars company who cannot support us children? Who's this monster? In exactly, my opposite man, you know what this mean? He worked for Amazon like a manager and make $200,000 per year. Are you thinking when you support him, he will bring you, what is this, houses or support children? It's never will be happen. So I right now speak to everybody who not pure pardon for your restriction, how mental deficiency, you know what this mean? And thinking so time right now for bring Bellevue back to normal. I remember Bellevue very well. I remember a nice city, but for last 20 years, they doing everything what is possible. Organized democratic mafia who controlling everything, they not care about people. Look what has happened in Bellevue right now. For example, when Amazon will become, he bring 30,000 employee from outside, you know what this mean? Hundred thousand people low income will be move out about housing, don't talking, don't have sense, because you cannot afford this. It's exactly what's happen. And for last couple year, couple year, rent jump by 40%. So don't talking about housing for poor people. We don't have, don't will be have a poor people. When Amazon bring 30,000, approximate income from two to three to $500,000. Stand up, America.
Do we have any other public commenters? Should we, can we check online as well as in person?
Nobody in person. George, can you just make sure if there's anybody online that can hear this and you would like to speak, please raise your hand. I think we're done. Madam President?
Actually, it appears that there's somebody, so... Yes, I see.
I see one.
So I will leave to you to confirm.
Hi, Megan, you're ready to go?
Great, thank you so much, and thanks for allowing the comments. I appreciated Superintendent Aramaki providing more detail about the transportation decisions and the cancellations that were coming from transportation. I'm a parent of a student at Sherwood Forest Elementary, and I was part of the school consolidation comment period last spring. One thing that came out of the whole school elementary consolidation was around equitable decision-making, and the school board made a commitment around having accountability around equitable decision-making. I just asked that the school board and at the school district think about equitable decision-making when you're coming to the transportation cancellations. This means that... This means that, you know, certain students might be, have a further burden or impact than other students in the district. So, for instance, Sherwood Forest is a Title I school. We have lower-than-average attendance than the district. A lot of our students also rely on services and meal services at Sherwood Forest. Through next week, we will have had eight.
I think you froze, and I wonder.
I would say would have, could have a different impact. Oh, can you hear me?
Yeah, we will let you go a few extra seconds because I think.
OK, did I break up?
Go ahead.
Yep, so I was just saying that Route 35 serves Sherwood Forest. And as of next week, it will have had eight days of canceled bus service. I just asked the district to please reaffirm the commitment you made to equitable decision-making. This is an opportunity right now to think about that equitable decision-making. When you're canceling routes, it's not just distributing across all of the different routes. It's thinking about how some students and some communities might be impacted differently than others and incorporating that into your decision-making. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you. So, I don't see anybody else, but I ask you to confirm that, and then. Yeah, so if, I think, so are we all good? OK, in that case, I think our superintendent has a comment related to transportation.
I just want to, I know we're not supposed to comment on public comment. I'll just say, just around transportation, I didn't mention that in my report on transportation. But I will say, we're trying to spread out the impact, but we are absolutely trying to protect through the lens of equity. And so, I do know that Sherwood Forest has been impacted a couple of times. I mean, it's a number of times, but we, I do want our families to know that what we're trying to do is we're trying to protect the routes that are tied to our Title I schools as much as possible. And in some of the cases recently, we haven't been able to. But whenever possible, we try not to touch any of the routes for our Title I schools. But so that, this is why this is so urgent because even with us trying not to cut routes that are connected to Title I schools, we're still having to because we just don't have enough drivers. And so, our number-one priority is to make sure that we get the routes set back up for our Title I routes in particular, but then for all of our routes after that. So, but I just want to thank Megan for that comment. I appreciate that, and it's a good call-out.
Great, thank you. I think we go now to board business. And we have two policies that Executive Director Harrison, they're the ones we talked about on Monday, but I believe you may have taken our input and are ready to project something.
Absolutely. And so, George, if you could just show the cleaned version, that would be great. And just for the record, just a little bit of context, this is Policy 6210, which is titled Purchasing Authorization and Control. Over the last year or so, directors have asked questions around the board's authority related to the approval of expenditures and purchases. And Policy 6000, which deals with the budget, provides and requires the superintendent to develop and propose an annual budget for your approval along with a budget hearing. The current Policy 6210 only requires board approval for purchase of capital outlay items when the aggregate of a requisition requires a formal bid in accordance with state law. So, what this, the proposed policy revisions do is maintain that authority to approve purchase of capital outlay items while adding authority for the board to approve the procurement of goods and services unrelated to capital outlay costs with a contract value of more than $1 million. As President Seraphin indicated, you saw this draft revisions, proposed revisions on Monday. And what I have for you tonight reflects that feedback. If you look at line 10 through 12, I have struck the sentence that used to say the district will promote fair competition to the extent possible, including, my eyes are deceiving me, including appropriate documentation. My eyes are really deceiving me tonight. In all, there we go. And situations where advertised sealed bids or requests for proposals are not used. And there was discussion around the term, to the extent practical, practicable. There was also discussion around what constitutes fairness. And those comments resonated with me, and this last sentence is confusing. So, I struck it. But the method to my madness is that we actually have a separate policy. If you scroll down, George, at the bottom of the document, Policy 620, Bid Requirements outlines the process for bid requirements. So, it seems prudent to me that we don't need to address bid requirements in this policy since they're addressed in another policy. So, I felt it was easier to remove the problematic sentence. And the only other change I put in there, if you could scroll up again, George, please, is right there. We, you talked about a situation where the superintendent has the authority to make a capital outlay purchase without advanced approval when it's necessary. And I think the suggestion was "and timely." But what we're really talking about here is an emergency situation. So, I thought that might be a little more clear. So, that was the only other change that I'm proposing since you met on Monday. So, President Seraphin, happy to hear additional feedback, answer questions.
OK, let me, I don't have any questions different from things I said on Monday, but I would like to hear from board directors. So, let me start with Director Chu.
John, thanks for making those changes. I agree with the just get rid of the sentence instead of trying to add more words to clarify something that's not really even relevant in this space. But in the emergency situation, that for me is insufficient for being very specific about when there is an exception from getting approval from the board. And for me, that exception is, sure, it's an emergency situation, and there is no time within, before the next regular board meeting. It has to be done prior to the next regular board meeting or something that makes it so that the board can't meet. Because otherwise, it's just leaving to the discretion of the administration to say, oh, yeah, this seems like an emergency. We'll just skip the board on this one. And that's just going to lead to inconsistent expectations.
Thank you.
It would, I would just comment on that. I think it would seem like if we're narrowing, it's hard to get, with notice requirements and everything else, we could maybe tie it to that. I mean, we have to have public notice that's at least 24 hours. So, perhaps something that factors that in could come into play. Director Iris, did you have anything, or Director Watson?
Yeah, I think I was thinking along the same line of, it would be nice if we could define what emergency situation, you know, means in this policy. I think it could be seen in many different ways. So, to prevent any misunderstanding, clarification would be better than that. I'm still not sold on the million-dollar, given the fact that we didn't have that before. And I understand this is, this came about in researching what other districts have. But I guess, what is the need of putting the million dollars when we didn't have that before? And I still prefer to have not a dollar limit or a specific number, but language that triggers for the board to look at specific items. Is there a way to go around that?
Before you get an answer, may I like ask? I don't have an answer for you either. I just, I want to understand where you're pressing for because are you saying that you don't want to use number as the consistent trigger? That there's something else you want to use as a consistent trigger? Or are you saying that this is drawing the line sooner than we normally? Like a lower level than we had normally been doing it? Like, what is it that you are trying to solve so that I can like listen with a better ear?
OK, so I guess my understanding is there wasn't a number in this policy before. And so, to put this, not having a number and now putting a million-dollar just because another district has it, doesn't convince me that we need to put a dollar amount.
What are the criteria that you would want to use so that the policy is enacted consistently and predictably?
I wondered if there is, I am not the best wordsmith person here on things of this nature, so I'm going to lean on rest of the board here. If there is a verbiage that we could put in that could trigger in the same method that we want the dollar amount to trigger, but not necessarily have a dollar amount. Does that make sense?
What I will say is, it's interesting. I think for context, this came out of, it was ideas that were kicked around when we were thinking about that conundrum, right, from years ago. And we're thinking, how can we avoid confusion? And people saying, well, we have a right, no, we don't have a right. So, this was one of the tools that was raised. I will say, I think I'm kind of struggling since it got raised and we talked about the other day. I had sort of the same mixed feeling. Is this, like, with a board that is generally collaborative and supportive of the superintendent, I don't worry. But when you think about an extreme situation, you could see that this could get misused. And so, I am not sure. I think it's a, I believe what happened is the $1 million is pinned to other districts, but they may not be districts we wish to emulate. So, I agree. How did, you know, like, is a million dollars too low? Is it too high? Is it arbitrary? And I hear what Director Chu is asking. Well, if we could distill it down to some criteria, how would we articulate that? I will just say, I'm actually kind of thinking, I'm still processing this, which is why I didn't have much comment tonight. Because since the discussion, I think Vice President Chu said, what problem are we trying to solve? I thought it was a fair point. I don't have any, I don't have anything insightful, I'll just say. Because I think the other policy that I think is forthcoming later regarding, you know, the thing that kind of fell into the cracks was the MOU. And we don't want to approve every MOU. We just want to make sure that if it's something major, we have clarity. And not having clarity is a problem. So, I feel like that was a good one. I'm no longer so convinced on this, but I could be, I could be. So, I'm curious what Director Chu or Director Watson thinks, too.
Well, for me, the problem being solved is being informed about big expenses. Because I feel that sometimes there's, there may be actually, I don't know, big expenses on like, I don't know, some curriculum that costs a lot of money. We bought a whole bunch of laptops. What falls under this on the supply side? I don't know. We didn't buy a million-dollar worth of magic markers. So, I, you know, but I would like to know, right? And so, this would be a way of sort of knowing about those things because we always know about, you know, the staircase at the elementary school, but we don't know if there's other big outlays. So, that's one thing. The other thing is, I concur about the emergency situation. And maybe we could put some words about where there's not enough time to get a board meeting together. But, you know, when the roof caves in, I want you to feel like you can go ahead and fix that, right? Without waiting. And then, the other thing is, I do want to be more convinced about the million dollars. I know I heard a couple of arguments. I heard, one, some other districts do it. And, two, it might be needed for some items over in special needs land that we don't necessarily want to make a big public fuss about. Like, so we don't want to set it lower for that. But we could put an exception in the language so that we don't have to put things that should be confidential out in public. But like, yeah, why a million? It just seems like a nice round number. So, maybe there's some more arguments, like examples, like how much things tend to cost, or some kind of argument that could be built.
Director Chu?
Thanks. It was really helpful to listen to all three of you. And my reflections about what motivates me to want a policy like this, it really has a lot to do with shared expectations and consistent approach to things. Because when you leave things discretionary, every, like, yeah, we want some discretion within operations and what have you. But when you leave it to some sort of discretion as to when a policy is triggered and when it's not, and you're unclear about that, or you end up with inconsistency, and worse than inconsistency, which leaves us with legal liabilities, you also end up with everyone having different expectations, which doesn't help build teams, predictability, or any of the things that are healthy. So, for me, I'd like to have this. To Carolyn's point, which I really appreciate, I appreciate getting the updates on the construction. I understand that there's a legal space. Like, if it crosses this line, you got to approve it. And for the most part, you know, we do our responsible due diligence. But for the most part, the district does the due diligence for us. And they bring that to us, and they're proven there's a trust relationship behind that due diligence. And so, I don't feel like it's onerous or inappropriate for us to approve it because we become the forcing function for the due diligence. We become part of the accountability without becoming some sort of directional overlord. So, I think it's good and healthy. I don't mind it. And if you want to look at the million dollars versus the 1.5 versus 2 million, whatever, go look at it, and let's let Kelly and John come back with something they think will work. And as far as what Carolyn said, I think that it would be entirely appropriate to build into this some sort of recognition that in some cases, a large expense may be spent for a single individual's education when it is directed at identifiable individual or individuals. Because we have to say, you referred to special education. There are times when we have to pay funds to send a child to special services that we don't have in our district that could trip this limit, I think is what you meant, yeah?
I was trying not to be so direct about it, but yeah.
Yeah, so the, when there are particular individual or individuals that are triggering expense who could be identified, this policy should be specific that they will not be identified in this, either by name or by enough information that they would become identifiable and that we recognize that. And I don't know how you would handle it, but we should, we should address it. So, I guess I would say, please, let's address what Carolyn brought up. Can Kelly and John do another iteration on the million dollars? And are there any other criteria besides cost that should trigger this? Those are the things that I'd land on.
I have one responsive comment, which is, you said Dr. Arumaki and Executive Director Harrison, and it seems like maybe our Deputy Superintendent DeVita could be part of that because just. Yeah, I mean, I think that would be helpful because it feels like that's where the apples and oranges. Like, another district, that might be appropriate for them. So, I think, I appreciate Director Iris's point. I think Director Watson had another comment, or you did not? OK, I think our general counsel wants to jump in.
Oh, I just want to say, Washington law changed this year with respect to how we have to enter into contracts for students who are served at non-public agency schools, including non-public agency schools here in Washington. And under the new requirements, we specifically have to include the student's name in the contract. So, I completely understand the desire to make sure that when we're doing approvals, that that students, those students' identities are respected. And we're going to have to set up a process for that for all of our existing NPA students already because we have had to shift to this model of specifically identifying student by name in contract. But because of that, we do have some things on the backside that help protect student identity and giving away who the students at issue are. But I didn't want anyone to be surprised that that's a change in how we have to contract this year that's new, that we actually have to use student name in contract.
OK, so it sounds like if I'm tracking, then there's an opportunity for you guys to consider this and think about how to handle the various concerns and come back to us.
Absolutely, and I think we all understand what you're trying to avoid and the difficulty of how to articulate it in a way where everybody is on the same page and understands what the threshold is and that it makes sense. And so, that 10 years from now, another board that maybe none of you are on will also understand what it is and not have to come back and watch videos to try and figure out what the intention was.
That's OK. I was just going to, thank you for this conversation. I feel a deep sense of trust, which is really great. I wanted to just mention, John and I with Shannon and some others, we can go back and kind of look at, one, the number. We can also look at other, are there other identifiable triggers that we would want to use if not just a number amount? And then, the last thing I'll just mention was, the purpose of bringing this up is a sort of what I think Carolyn, Christine, when you talked about oversight and understanding like what's happening, I think that's kind of the reason that I wanted to bring this forward, too, was to improve. forward, too, was to improve oversight for the board, and in collaboration with the superintendent. So like, when there are big expenditures that have a significant impact on our budget in general, do we have at least some eyes on it? It wouldn't necessarily be that we would, it wouldn't necessarily be that it'd be a big thing every time, but it's just so that we all have eyes on it when there are big expenditures like that. So that's kind of the big purpose of a change like this. Otherwise, you know, the original just doesn't have any mention of anything outside of capital, so.
Thank you. I think we are ready to go to item 6.2, which is 6883, and do you want to give, I guess you'll project that.
Yeah, we'll project again. George, if you could project the clean version. And just quickly, for the record, the context here is that policy 6883 is titled "School Closure," and this is, this is one of the original set of policies the board adopted as part of the review of policies in 2012, 13, and when we transitioned to WASDA numbering. So this policy hasn't been revised since, and we actually have a live procedure that is titled Procedure 1440, which doesn't even align with our WASDA numbering system. So that was in place prior to 2012, 13. And last spring, we went through the elementary school consolidation process. It became pretty clear that our policy and our procedure were not aligned, and it was pretty clear that the policy, current policy, was really written in accordance with legislation that was really intended to deal with situations when a school is permanently closed, you know, and shuttered, where in our situation last spring, we were closing schools and consolidating school communities. So it was, the language consolidation, closure was confusing. So what I proposed and what you saw on Monday really just included the term consolidation. And your feedback, and I'll summarize, was really that it didn't address the confusion between consolidation and closure, and that was problematic. And there were some, there were some other additional excellent feedback that I'm going to, I'll walk you through right now. And I apologize, I hope I'm not getting sick, but my voice keeps on cracking and sounds a little frog-like, so my apologies. So this came up that we have a commitment, and the statement that I had included was something along the lines of what we wanted to do was, you know, ensure effective community engagement. And your feedback, that was basically that that didn't really, you know, address our strong commitment to not only community engagement, but to our equity-driven decision-making. So I thought we should lead with that. So I rewrote the first paragraph, which is new language, beginning on line nine, "The district is committed to deep community engagement and equity-driven decision-making on issues that impact our community. The district will proactively seek the needs of our community to guide the community engagement process and to inform the development of any proposal to close a school building and consolidate school communities." So that last piece there is a shift, and basically I came to this aha that we really did close schools last spring. And as a result of closing schools, we consolidated school communities. And so, that's the first place where you see that terminology. So the premise is, if we are proposing to close a school, we would also be proposing to consolidate school communities, because the students in any given named school would need to be, would need to be, would need to be educated somewhere. And so, the next sentence is not new, but is repositioned, and again, the same terminology. "The superintendent may consider the closure of a school facility and the consolidation of school communities by providing the board with a written analysis and proposal that considers the following." So one of the suggestions was that the equity piece show up into the considerations. I felt it was stronger at the front end in terms of a commitment, but highlighted in B is new language, where I state the impact of closure on students, families, that a consideration is the impacts that closure and consolidation will have on our students, family, staff, and community. Under H, sorry, not H, G is new language. I separated out staff impact and costs that would be related to consolidation and closure, like transportation. So in the prior version, those two portions were connected, so now there's a separate section, line 23, that specifically speaks to staff, staff displacement and reassignment in the event of a proposed school closure and consolidation. And then, in the remaining paragraph, you'll see that highlight consolidation and closure, closure, sorry, closure and consolidation, closure and consolidation, closure and consolidation, so that it's consistent. And George, if you could scroll down, I did a couple of other pieces at your request. One of you mentioned, we have a community engagement, community advisory group policy, so that should be referenced, and now that is referenced there. And also, we did not reference in the previous version our equity policy, which should drive everything that we do. So the equity policy is now listed in the references. So those are the changes, and I hope they reflect your feedback on Monday, and again, happy to hear additional feedback and/or answer any questions we can.
I have one, I guess it's what we've been calling wondering. The issue with consolidation is, even though, I think you're right, we're talking about consolidating communities, it's the word facilities. So it's the, so it feels like what we're doing is, we, the policy captures a scenario where you may close a building, you may repurpose the building, and you may consolidate an existing school community into, you know, bringing two different communities and bringing them together. So the consolidation feels more about the community, repurposing feels more appropriate for the building, enclosure also feels relevant for the, so I think something to consider is, when you have the word facility, what goes with it? So I don't have an answer, but I just offer that, because I think that's what was maybe needling at me. Director Chu?
Thank you.
I want to build right on top of that at the same time, so we just kind of get this out of the way. There are scenarios where a closure and consolidation can happen in the same time. That didn't happen this past time, and I think we need to be very, very careful. What is it that we want the community to participate in? What do we want this policy to apply to? And what are the different scenarios? One scenario is that a building is simply closed. You could say it's consolidated, but let's say the enrollment has shrunk to 20 people, it's not much of a consolidation, we just closed the building. And yeah, the kids, the 20 remaining kids out of 500 got reassigned, but that's, I wouldn't call it anything more than a building closure. The second scenario is, we repurpose a building, and in so doing, we consolidate some groups. Maybe it's all the groups that were in that school, and all the groups in another school, or two or three buildings, and we kind of redistribute them and consolidate them together, that's a consolidation. But there's the repurposing of a facility and the closure of a facility. And then building consolidation, which is something I would want the community to have a say in, even if we didn't close or repurpose a building, if we were going to, you know, decide that, you know what, we're going to do just primary schools K3, and we're going to kind of rearrange, and then we'll have another school, like, so another building will be 3, 4, 5. Well, that wouldn't fit under this, but it does, and it is a type of consolidation, and it is something I'd want the community to have feedback on. So it's not about a simultaneous closure and consolidation, or even a simultaneous repurposing and consolidation. Sometimes consolidation itself needs to trigger the policy. Sometimes building closure needs to trigger the policy, and sometimes repurposing needs to trigger the policy. So I think we need to be distinct and very, very clear about what the events are that we want to trigger this. So that's the building on what you said. Since I have the mic, I'll just give my other two quick comments, which are, I appreciate the addition of the policy references at the bottom. To me, that's insufficient in terms of the policy itself. The policy itself needs to talk about equity in the policy. That is a part of our fabric, and it needs to guide all of our decisions, and it can't just be like, oh yeah, and that thing is already always done. We have already learned, the whole point of that policy itself was because we learned that it's not understood, it can't just be distributed, it needs to be called out, we need to keep it front of mind. So I would put it in the policy language.
Okay. Director Watson?
Yeah, I'll follow on that. I would like to add the words, using the critical criteria somewhere in there, whether it's on line 15 or down on line 20, or, you know, I just would like to, since we went to all the trouble of having all these people work on developing the critical criteria, I think we should explicitly say that it needs to be used in this analysis.
Thank you.
Director Aris?
Oh, I don't have too much to add to that, because I think everyone's covered what I wanted to say. I do agree on the critical criteria. In fact, I would almost suggest that we start with that in the bullet point of, as the first one. You have, you know, the sequence of A through I right now, instead of making projected or actual enrollment, start with that.
Thank you, Director Harrison. Does that give you the input and feedback that you need?
It was great input, thank you very much, Board.
Okay. Director Chu?
Sorry, one more. I know that the addition of B, or the clarification of B in the list about making sure that we're considering the impacts of closure and consolidation on students, is meant, it has great intention. I think it is too easy for us to say that we've done that based on our own understanding of what those needs are. And for me, I want to see in this list, I think I said this last time I made a, I put a comment in the document, that the list itself should validate and reinforce our commitment to, that when we do this, just using the words here, the proposal considers the following issues, and one of those should be the self-reported needs and concerns of the impacted community and impacted shareholders. So whether it's the, you know, staff of educators who have expertise to offer the students or the families involved, like, I know you're committed to that, because it says up top about engagement, but when we say the proposal will consider, it's not sufficient for the proposal to consider what we think the impacts of closure are. So I'd spell out that we, we want some engagement and reporting in that.
Okay.
Thank you, Director Chu.
Here we go now to last item, which is director, before our study session, our director discussion, and who we each have, there's four of us tonight, we each have five minutes. So who would like to kick us off? Look at those hands fly. Okay, why don't I start? Okay, can I get a timer? George? I think I kind of had two PSAs, I guess. One was that, I think as Director Aris knows, next Wednesday is the Youth Link Gumbo Night, and there's a nice history behind it, and they now have it, they used to have it, it grew organically from an event at someone's house, the Grindelins, and then they now have it at Crossroads Community Park. So that's open to all board directors, if you're interested. It's next Wednesday at Crossroads from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. So I wanted to share that, and if you can make it, I think they really enjoy having board directors stop by. The other thing was, I think, and one of you guys can correct me, but I looked online for the Festival of Trees for Jubilee Reach, and I believe it's, I was looking for it in November, and I think it's actually, because of WASDA, it's moved out till December 2nd. So that was kind of all I had. I also wanted board directors to know that, I think you know this, but coming up on October 30th, our superintendent has our, a study session that will follow our special meeting. So he emailed us about that, or he put it, I think, in our Friday letter, and there should be a placeholder that Ms. Namila is going to be putting on our calendars, so it's on everybody's on calendar, but that's coming up.
Does that have to be on the 30th? Usually when we have study sessions, we actually survey board members for availability, and I'm at a family event that day.
I think it's our superintendent's going to be unavailable to do that Thursday, but I will let you think about that one. And I still have three minutes of my time, so we can use it for this.
Yeah, sorry about that, Director Chu. I think it's, we moved it because that Thursday, I'm going to be out of town, so I'll be, I'll be online for the board meeting, but not available to do the study session on that day, I suppose. Yeah, so that's why we moved it to that Monday. But I guess what we can do is, we could see what other people think, and then we, if we need to move it, we can move it. I just wanted to make sure.
It was going to be online only, for what it's worth, but, but we could do a, maybe we could ask Ms. Namila to do a little survey or something? Would that work?
Yeah, yeah, let me think about it. Sorry about that.
Okay, how about if we go to the next director? Okay, Director Aris?
Okay, let me start with some fun news. This past weekend was quite full and with lots of activities. Very much appreciate BSF putting on that block party. That was quite the event. I was nicely surprised to see how many people showed up and how many people participated, and the kids loved, well, Dick's provided free hamburgers, ran out of that, the bouncy house was great. It was just, it was a wonderful gathering, and the weather was cooperative, so that was even better. The other event that I attended, which was the preseason robotics tournament, which was held to Smamish by Smamish Robotoats. I think the nice thing about that particular one was, they did to invite new teams, teams that's just started, and they're just feeling out this whole, you know, space, and they had teams that had come from Oregon and even Idaho. And so, it was packed house. We had Senator Wellman who showed up, as well as House Representative Mila Thai and City Youth Council John Son also showed up, and we also had some staff show up, which, and I think everybody was surprised. It's one of those events, when you attend, you're shocked to see how exciting these kids are, how passionate they are, the energy is just so amazing. So it was wonderful to see all six of our high schools have teams there and show off their skills, so that was fun. The third thing that I actually want to share is that, given that we're wrapping up the year, and we will have two new board members that is, will be joining the board in December, I had asked Dr. Armaaki if we could have a special session, I think it's what it would be called, between our session in beginning of November and December, where we could have a shared space with the current five and the two new ones. I understand that typically, historically, it's been where, you know, we do the swearing in, and we do the vote of all the spaces, and I think it would be helpful, at least I think it would have been helpful for me when I joined the board, to hear from the current board what it was like to serve in all the different spaces, and what does that really mean? How much time you spend, how much commitment does that, you know, and have an opportunity to have a conversation with all the current board members. And, and so, I had asked, I think Dr. Armaaki's still thinking about it, and I asked if it would be facilitated by someone other than one of us five, so that it takes the ownership away from us, and create a more of a nice collaborative and also invitation or inviting space for the two new board members. I wonder what you guys would think about that? I know it's an additional meeting, that wasn't in the schedule or planned. I know it's an additional meeting. That wasn't in the schedule or planned?
I'll try to be quick so everyone can say something. I think it would be a great idea to have an open discussion about getting started, about officerships, who's interested in doing things, who's interested in taking on liaisons. We used to do that prior to the Board meeting, and we used to have some really productive discussions. I think the last two years, the organizing meeting that we've had has contributed to divisiveness among Board that hasn't been as productive as we could have, that, that, you know, we can all soul-search about how we each contributed to it. But I think that, that having an opportunity where it's not just an election and a choice and a decision and then go would really give the Board a nice opportunity to sort of get to know each other and figure out how people might serve in different positions. I think that's a great idea.
Well, I will tell my little anecdote about Gumbo Night. It's funny how, you know, different General Councils are different. And so when I was first invited to that Gumbo Night, I said, okay, I'll go. And then I got uninvited because the General Counsel told the private house, whoever it was, that they would have to notice it as an open public meeting. And all of Bellevue would also have to be invited to their house. And so they said, please don't come. So I didn't. So that was a little bit of history for you. And then I wanted to comment on how much I enjoyed our visit to Highland. Both, I feel like I've had two visits, right? Because I went to the, the hub meeting and I got to see what Life Spring's doing and the medical clinic, the dental van, the M hat work. I got really excited and then went there that morning. And just the warmth I felt from the teachers and the kids and going in the classrooms and seeing what sort of bilingual science might look like. I was really excited about it. And so I am a little discouraged when we're getting emails from people in the community who, who feel like Highland must be the school that we want to close. And I just really want to say, you know, that decision is not made, right? And I don't want to speak out of turn, but my opinion, as a personal, one-person Board member, is that I love Highland. And so I just wanted to go on the record that that would, you know, we have to get all the data. We have to do all the analysis. We have to see what the Superintendent recommends. But I wish that that community didn't feel that because they're a title school that somehow they're going to be targeted. Because it's just wonderful now. And I just really feel the turnaround from what, you know, the rumors used to be when, when I first moved here and so forth. So anyway, I, I just wanted to dispel the notion it's not on some secret shortlist for closures. And that's kind of what I wanted to say.
Did you want to respond to Director Aris's suggestion?
Yeah, I would be open to that, yeah.
So I would say, it would seem like since we have November 9th as the organizational meeting, maybe one idea. I think you'd have to make sure that our incoming Board Directors were interested. Perhaps a way to do it would be to have our, have them invited to our Monday meeting, our special meeting, when we have, when we meet at that time. We could, we could perhaps follow our regular and just have an hour, all of us. That could be a way to do it. So it's an idea, but.
I'd just like to say, I was assuming, maybe incorrectly, that that meeting would be in person, you know?
Okay, so I don't know when you would be proposing for that to happen because I assumed that we would do a lot of talking actually during WASDA, just general talking. It wouldn't be about Board business. It would be about the past. So that's why I thought that might be kind of, that would be, and I know Dr. Aramaki had planned a dinner. So I think I, I kind of thought that organically, we would have that time together.
Will the new people be at the dinner?
Yeah, I think they've been invited. Well, I saw them on the invite.
Yeah, I think if the Board wants to do this, something we could do is we will all be together at the WASDA conference. And our two new members are going to be there at the WASDA conference. So we can either, we can work with Shannon to figure out exactly what the rules are. And WASDA has a nice kind of explanation of what the rules are. But if we wanted to spend some time sharing kind of what we've been learning at the conference, but then also spend some time talking about what the different roles are, we could probably do some kind of special session or something at the conference since we'll all be together anyways, so.
I think I'll, I'll talk before we, like, I'll start my five or something.
Yeah, let's, let's start it.
Yeah, so for the, for purposes of that, I think that since the idea, I think that Jane was proposing would include some level of discussion of Board business, then it would have to be a specially noticed meeting, but it could be during that period of time. And I think that'd be great. So I'm, I'm all for that and would be happy to work it in. The things that I wanted to bring up were a few things. First, great visit at Highland. Just wanted to thank everyone who was involved in, in really highlighting the needs that we fill and the challenges in filling those needs with, for the health, mental and physical health benefits that we offer and how we're funding that and how we need some help. And I think while King County's budget, as you saw, is really in a cuts mode this year, it's not in an additions mode, there's still room to work with the Council and see if we can get some more committed, consistent funding for community health in schools. And I think we shouldn't give up. I think that needs, that's going to need multiple years of just persistent work. For the WASDA issue on weighted vote, there's a lot of things going on. But what I'd keep in mind is there weren't a ton of things that were passed in this particular General Assembly that will have WASDA advocating for things that are out of the interest of our children. However, the way that the, with the removal of the weighted vote and the change in tenor of how WASDA is being organized, I think that there is a danger of that down the road. Our legislators are aware of it. And so there's some conversations that we can have and we should have. And everyone should be on the same page so that we, we are able to advocate collectively for that. But, but I'm still getting some information from some of the groups that are doing advocacy. So I will try very hard to keep everyone posted. And I think Jane is talking to some folks about it as well. So we'll try to fill everybody in.
And what timing are you thinking? And I assumed this was kind of a longer-term thing.
I think it's to keep you posted, and I'll be handing something off. It won't be done.
That's kind of what I assumed. I just, yeah.
And then one other thing I wanted to, to bring up was the Highland visit. I agree with Carolyn that, that it was, you know, another good visit to hear from community members and so forth. But I will say, one of our Board Members consistently brings up what it's like to participate online. And I will say, it was a pretty poor experience participating online. And it wasn't just the, the nature of, of technology. It was preparedness. It was inclusion and facilitation. It was inclusion in activities. And like, everything from, I'm going to call them out, not because I personally, you know, it's fine, I've been on a million school visits. But I think it's important that everyone has the awareness as we try to build that into our culture. And I'll say, like, you got to ask the person who's online if they have a question because it's hard for them to just chime in. You got to make sure they're introduced. And if they have trouble getting online, because first of all, we need to plan ahead. And if there's going to be special links to, to a specific meeting, the special link needs to be sent out ahead of time. And so if somebody doesn't get that special link and then has trouble, they never get introduced in the meeting. They're never even, the people are never even told that they're there, even though they're there and listening. You know, you take a picture with kids, and you just do that away from the screens. People who are attending the meeting online are not included in the picture and are immediately left out. And I would just say, and I also didn't hear during that meeting anyone query if there were parents online who had questions that they wanted to raise during the parent session. So I think, like, it is challenging and it is hard to do these multimedia meetings. But inclusion is, is so important. It does take extra time, and it is hard. But I think it is worthwhile to have full participation. So that is, that is something I just wanted to raise. And then the other thing I wanted to raise was I really appreciated the collaborative Board discussion at our Monday meeting to talk about how to be deeply inclusive of everyone in our community in the midst of a conflict. And I hope that as we move forward, that that becomes more than a five-person discussion, that that's a six-person discussion from the start. So when we're doing messaging to the communities, that we're messaging as a, as a full leadership body right from the get-go. And we can think about how to do that. Because I think there were questions about, should we say anything as a Board? Should we just let the Superintendent say anything? Well, we care. We care a lot. And it guides how we, we want to facilitate inclusive policies and things. So we did want to say something. But I think there's also opportunities as we continue to move forward and grow to have those things right from the start as a six, as a group of six. But I really appreciated the discussion on Monday. And Sima, thank you for initiating it.
Great, thank you. We are literally right on time. So we end our Director Discussion, and we take a 15-minute recess. And then we will start our study session. So we stand in recess. Thank you.